I call this meeting to order. It is 7:00 PM on Monday, August 20th, 2018. This is a regular meeting of the Richfield School Board. In attendance this evening, we have board members Tim Paulus, Crystal Brockie, John Ashmead, Pete Tensing, Paula Cole. We have Superintendent Janowski, and I am Board Chair Christine Malik. I would like to remind us of Richfield Public Schools' mission statement. "Richfield Public Schools Inspires and Empowers Each Individual to Learn, Grow, and Excel." We will keep this in the forefront of our minds as we work together this evening. We will start with review and approval of the agenda. If anyone is prepared to make a motion.
I'll move to the agenda.
There's a motion by Mr. Paulus, a second by Ms. Brockie. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the agenda is approved. We will move on to information and proposals, not action items, and we're starting this evening with public comment. So, individuals who wish to address the school board during a school board meeting may do so during the public comments portion of the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. To participate, individuals must make a written request to the Board Secretary up to 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting, or up until one minute before on the sign-up sheet outside the door. This grants speakers the opportunity to make a presentation up to three minutes. The Board Secretary, Beth, will indicate with a sign "30 Seconds and Time's Up." When the time is up, we ask that you finish your comments if you have more to share with the Board. I would request that you put your additional comments in writing on a board comment sheet for us to review before the next meeting. Those are located on the table outside where you entered the room. We ask that each speaker who signed up address the board and state their name and address for the record. Speakers are asked to refrain from using this form to criticize or make allegations about specific employees by name due to privacy and legal concerns for employees and for the speaker. The Board takes into consideration comments made during public comments, but is not holding a two-way dialogue or discussion during the public comments. It is designed for us to listen now, and if needed, provide a district response at a later time. And questions and concerns and requests may be directed to appropriate administrators for review. If you require a written response to a specific question, you may also request that. We also expect others attending the meeting to be respectful of those that have signed up to speak and allow them their three minutes without interruption in conversation. If you do interrupt, I would have to request that you please stop and allow them to speak, or I will have to ask you to leave the meeting. If you continue, I will have to ask you to leave the meeting. If you were unable to make a request in advance of tonight's meeting, we have two ways for you to share your thoughts with us. Either using the board comment sheet, so you can do it in writing. Those are located out front, and we would review your comments before the next meeting. The other is for you to request to participate in public comment for future board meetings. So, I really thank you all for attending and for your attention and respect in this process. We're really happy that you are all here to share with us tonight. So, we are going to start with Ann Flait.
Hi. Most of you know me. This year, I have two students at the high school. One is incoming junior, and one is going to be freshman. Very excited about that. And I'm very excited that you are looking at gender-inclusive policies. My incoming junior is non-gender binary. We've been very lucky that the school has been supportive of respecting their pronouns. But I know they have concerns and things that they would like to see addressed. For me, raising kids that are LGBTQ, my concern is how can I make their environment safe? And in terms of schools and school board, how can I make their school environment safe so that they can focus on learning and do well and be successful? And in looking at this issue, I found a survey that said that 75% of transgenders have been banned from being in school. More than 50% of them are not allowed to use the bathroom with their gender identity. And if those who persevere and really do push through and get through school, which, by the way, how sad is it that any student has to push to get through school? Schools should be their safe place. Their GPA's so much lower. So, when we're looking at gender-inclusive policies, and what this means for our students, it means helping them graduate, helping them get good grades that are going to set them up for the rest of their life. As an adult, I have friends who have transitioned much later in life, and I wonder how their lives would have been different. Have we had the words for what they would feel like when we were kids? And we've had the policies that allowed them to be who they were in the 90s instead of the 2000s. 2018. So, I wanted to speak just for a moment or two and just say how much work this policy so that you know the community enjoys me, don't you? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Rivera Bassam.
Hi. Ignore the word clothing. So, I just want to say, like you and my mother, I am super-duper inclusive, 100% of this policy. And because there won't be many more of how they are inclusive of this policy, I wanted to give some thoughts of what we could also go on to. I don't want to say that this is great, but I'm thinking if we want to go ahead and think about the next steps that we could take to improve and add on, I have some ideas for that. For, especially for the bathrooms, I think a good idea would be to add at least one more gender neutral bathrooms. Because the gender neutral bathroom we have now is right near the door, but it's going to create a secure area. And no kid having to go from class to class and who isn't near the door, and walk all the way down there, or even to the nurses, they won't go to that. But that's taking up the nurse's time because she may be attending to other people. And it's just a problem, especially for kids who just want to use the bathroom. So, I think at least having one or two more gender neutral bathrooms would be a good addition. So, also to that, I would just become a prime recommend. Keep in mind with all this, you know, with our other gender students, you know, please make sure it be timed to be gender fluid students. I know it's very tempting because of all the backlash of what if a man goes to a female restroom? And, but there are, and you know, but there are gender neutral or gender fluid kids who may fluctuate between that bathroom. They may be, they may feel a male one day, but then say, hey, I'm feeling a lot more feminine this way. And that's totally fair, but they may just get backlash for it because of all the other backlash going on. But they should be allowed to use the restroom that they feel comfortable with at home too. So, well, this is a great first step. There is, there's so much more, you know, we could do for all these gender, you know, all the kids across the board, and what more we could do and all that. I forgot all the others. That's okay. I got the one thing that I was really thinking about with these bathrooms, with the gender neutral, more gender neutral bathrooms. But that's okay.
Thank you. Please feel free to, if you think of it, you can always write it down on the sheet. That's okay. Next, we have Jennifer Halpa.
Hi. I'm Jennifer Halpas. I'm the mother of a transgender teenager. I'm from Milka Happen School area. I wasn't going to divulge that, but I'm just going to. And my child has experienced discrimination because of my case-by-case basis and gender student policy. And it warms my heart to see that you're doing this work. I've read your policy. I really am stunned. I mean, I'm amazed. Thank you, really from the bottom of my heart. I'm going to, I've read it. So, in your reading and review tonight, I was hoping you would consider the following things about names and pronouns usage. The parental consent requirement is not clear. That's tremendously important for transgender youth with unsupportive parents. The gender neutral bathroom additions, I hadn't thought of, but if there's only a few, it's great people can use the bathroom they feel comfortable in, but not everyone will. So, the gender neutral bathroom additions could be of concern. Being open about how your district will provide alumni name and gender marker changes to official records. This is in reference to people who have already graduated or who have yet to transition. Addressing processes within schools to ensure dead names are not used in documents. This has happened to my child. Their dead name was used in an honor roll list, posted in the hallway, posted in newspapers. There's a way to help process. It's not too hard. And also, my final thing regarding students, to equally apply these gender transition plans. My student went to a new school. So, these students come to us in so many ways about their lifelong residence of Richfield. We'll say they transitioned into their authentic selves. They're somebody who moves from somewhere else to be here. They're already transitioned. They already know their name. They already know their use of this bathroom. So, there's so many ways these kids can come to us, right? So, with these gender transition plans, my background is in HR. I studied it, affirmative action. It doesn't work unless it's equally applied through all the schools. So, my last thing I'm going to say is use this opportunity to design inclusive policy to assert more that addresses the rights of transgender adults in your schools as employees, guests, and parents of cisgender students. And thank you so much for your work.
Thank you. Next, we have Matthew Sikkich.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Matthew Sikkich, and I've been practicing in Hennepin County and throughout the five-state area and a couple other states nationally as a parenting consultant and mediator for over 30 years. And I have some comments tonight that I wish to make, and out of respect for everybody that's involved in this. Number one, I really like that the Board has moved ahead to look at this situation seriously to include all students. And I think Pam and her daughter and Jennifer, even though you're in another district, that's really important because all children need to be respected and supported. I do, however, having looked through this, I think some of the areas are too soon and too hard to implement, and that the Board needs to take serious look at the considerations of the impact on all the other students and how you bring it together. And so, I'm going to bring some of these up for you. And as you look over, number one, it says "all students." And I don't think all students are included, especially the ones that do not share this type of growth or change in their life, okay? I don't have time to get into it, but I think we really have to reflect when we start using that term. In there, it says "gender identity and gender expression." I have no idea. I don't know, Rivera, how much your expression of yourself and all of who you are would compare to somebody else, okay? And where that would cross over. And I think that that needs to be an open discussion, and not only do adults need to learn this, but kids need to learn from each other how that would be and how we would accept one another in that. But because it's not clearly defined here, I think the school can get into serious legal implications by those, instead of working together, are taking either political or other types of sides instead of coming together. And I just want to warn you of that, especially being a mediator. So, there's other things in that I think it's just too soon. And basically, there's nothing in here that specifically addresses what that expression means. I think the school is going to get into serious repercussions, especially in the form of discrimination, and especially when you get into sports activities, locker room situations, and other things. I think we're far too, there's too much too soon on that, but we're moving in the right direction to recognize. I think the activities and how things happen and how you deal with other kids are really important. And I think ideas that Rivera has.
Your signature? The time is up, so if you could wrap up and you could put anything else in writing for us.
The digital pieces, so we can't use the names of other people during this, so it would be appropriate for you not to use their names.
And we had an individual speaking tonight, whose name will not be mentioned, that I think had some great ideas on what we could be done for restrooms and other things to make it more comfortable and more positive in our schools. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll move on to Mara Luka.
Hi. My name is Mara Luka. I'm a transgender woman that lives just a few blocks away from here in 66. And what else did you need from me in the introduction?
That's fine.
That's good? Okay. I lost most of my life to the "it's too soon" mentality. And now, in fact, it was nearly six decades worth of that. I raised three sons in the process. They're all about 30, doing very well, so I guess I didn't mess things up too badly because I'm me. I spent a life in management, and I have, I believe, a pretty good understanding of this matter from my life. Anybody that is like me could give you the same. I just want to point out, first of all, I want to thank you for what you've got in place. You're ahead of the curve. I go to school board meetings, and it's a lot different than it would have been as a Jennifer. So, you're way ahead of the curve, just like Minnesota itself has been way ahead of the curve on this. Minneapolis was the first city ever to implement protections for people like us in 1975. So, it's been 43 years, and you're still arguing about this. It's not too soon, in my opinion, my humble opinion. The state of Minnesota implemented protections in 1993, the first state to do so. Every major medical and mental health organization advocates for affirming and being compassionate to transgender and gender nonconforming youth. Does that mean?
No.
My time was wrong. Yeah. So, I mean, the American Medical Association, the American Association of Pediatricians, the American Psychological Association, they all affirm being nice to transgender kids and letting them be who they are and for their rights, and so am I. Thank you again for letting me stand here and talk.
Thank you. And next, we have Jamie Ebert.
Hi. My name is Jamie, officially Ebert. I live at 3008 West 74th Street in Richfield for about five weeks now. My boyfriend bought a house in Richfield six months ago that I just moved into at the beginning of July. So, I woke up this morning and I see an alert that says, "Go to the Richfield School Board to support transgender students." And I was like, oh, crap, what am I doing? What did we move into? So, I get to work. I hop online. I do some research, and I see that it's not you folks that are attacking transgender students, but I read the history of the minutes and what you've already talked about this, and I read through your policy. And I just needed to show up anyway to make sure there were folks in the room to say thank you for what you're doing. My mom teaches eighth-grade math in an adjacent school district, and she runs the GSA at her school. She had a student who was in eighth grade and, you know, one week wanted to be called this name and these pronouns, and then the next week was not so sure and wanted to go by this name and this pronoun. And my mom's, you know, trying to work through it with this student as best as she can. And then my mom has another teacher come up to her and say, "Oh, man, come on. I got used to calling them this name, and now I got to figure this thing out. And oh, this is so hard for me." To which my mom says back to this person, "If you think that's hard for you, how hard do you think it is for this student who's in eighth grade, trying to figure out what gender they are among everything else you have to deal with in middle school?" So, I read through this policy today, and I wanted to very specifically note a couple of things in here that I think go out of their way to show that this student is the first thing that you care about in this policy, specifically the privacy section that very specifically states who and when can need to know different things and how things can be shared, as well as the section on just setting up what these plans will look like and understanding that they're individualized and focusing on making sure that each student has exactly what's in different men and their specific. My boyfriend and I are planning on living here for at least two years while he finishes an engineering degree, at which point we will hopefully start a family and decide whether or not we're going to stick around here in Richfield. And seeing you do this, seeing you go out of your way to support and care for individual students in such a deep and thorough and well-thought-out way makes me know that if we do end up staying here, I'd be proud to send my kids to a school district that we know is going to actually give this much attention and care to each individual student. So, I wanted to just show up today. I did not pick Richfield. My boyfriend did, but making this a space where you're accepting people in this way means a lot to me. I'm happy to be here. Thank you for doing your job.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you for sharing your perspectives. We really do appreciate that. We will move to reports and information from school sources, starting with Superintendent Uplaid.
All right. So, first, I'm just going to welcome our new Director of Special Education, Mary Pat Nessler, who's here with us today. We're happy to see you standing up and waiting for us. We passed our board chart policy at our last meeting, and some of our new staff were here. Mary Pat wasn't able to be at that meeting, so she's just here to be welcomed to our district. She joins us with a great deal of special ed experience, serving the individual needs of kids, and comes to us most recently from Colorado, where she was a special education leader in a very progressive district. So, we're very happy to have her joining our team. With that, I'm proud to bring Mr. Bill Davis to the microphone. Mr. Davis is one of the leads for the Spartan Foundation as we think about how we support our students in Richfield and how this community has supported. Students of Spartan Foundation has given hundreds upon hundreds of thousands of dollars to scholarships to our students to help them ensure the futures that they dream of for themselves. And so, with that, I believe Mr. Davis has a presentation for us.
I do. Thank you, Steve. My name is Bill Davis. I'm here representing the Richfield Spartan Foundation. I'm also a graduate of Richfield High School. I'm back in Stone Age in 1960. I live at 6638 Ochs Avenue South in Richfield. I've been in my house for 43 years. That makes me sound old. The Richfield Spartan Foundation, we just ended our 29th year. And it was started by two alumni of the school board, George Harris and Bob Lindbergh, 29 years ago, as a method to supplement the budgets of the fine arts and athletic programs at Richfield High School. We had a golf tournament, and we were able to provide that type of funding for scholarships for the African and the national award winners, which were the female athlete and the male athlete. Over the years, we've attracted the attention of some other foundations and some other people who believe in what we do. And starting about eight years ago, we expanded our scholarship program to include scholarships for up to and including this year, 24 students as selected by the scholarship board at the high school. The scholarships range from academic and athletic and leadership roles, but the part that excites me the most is what we call our "at-all-odds" scholarships. These are students who have had personal setbacks, personal challenges, and have overcome them to have a successful and meaningful experience at Richfield High School. So, today, I'm going to bring a check and give it to the school board for $24,000, a $1,000 scholarship, these scholarships are here. And we hope to continue. It'll be our 30th year coming up, and we hope that we'll be able to do another 24, maybe more. We're looking for different ways that we can use the beliefs and donations and memorials that are coming to the scholarship fund out to enhance the programs of all of Richfield schools. So, with that, I got the money if you want some.
You don't have to ask me twice first. Just going to share with, if you could pass this around. This is an example of the scholarship breakfast that occurs, and it's one of the highlights of the school year for the Spartan Foundation and for our students. And so, our students and their families are invited to the scholarship breakfast, and each of them receives acknowledgement and then also a scholarship.
This year, we had over 100 at the scholarship breakfast. To me, it's the best morning of the year where each scholarship recipient is able to bring two of their family or friends or supporters and are acknowledged and recognized, and it's a great, it's a great, it's a great event. So, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right. So, with that, we're going to transition to a conversation around capital facility improvements. I'm going to bring Craig Goldy and the team up to the microphone to talk about some of the significant transformations that are happening within our facility at the high school. Makes you quite pertinent a conversation that we heard in public comment.
Very good. Thank you. We're very excited to share the update on the work that's taken place at Richfield High School. At the last board meeting, the Board had the chance to see what's been going on at Richfield STEM School, Richfield Dual Language School, and Central. And so, some of these are becoming regular, frequent faces in front of you, sharing the updates and keeping the Board, as well as keeping the community informed on the exciting things that are taking place. So, with that, I'm going to be brief here and turn it over to Andy and Vaughn and their team that are here to kind of share the highlights of this work that's taking place at Richfield High School.
Good evening. So, since we were here last at the last meeting, giving the update on Central, our DLS and our STEM, and to save the where we've been and where we're going presentation portion, so I'll just, to remind everybody, the district-wide initiatives that we're accomplishing in all buildings, our security improvements, kitchen and serving renovations, ADA restroom improvements, mechanical improvements, special ed space improvements, and then long-term facilities maintenance, which are the most robust portion of the projects. And then I'm going to turn it over to Vaughn, and he's going to get into the details outside of those things that we're accomplishing at the high school.
I'm going to start the presentation by giving a special acknowledgement to Principal Daniels, and you should be thanking her because she has been challenging the design team, her own staff, for what does this building need to look like in the next 50 years versus what has it been for the last 50 years. So, I want to make sure to acknowledge all the hard work that she's put into this. If you take a look at the site diagram here, you'll see sort of the big components of where they fit in the project. For starters, expanding the commons area, which is really about changing it from just sort of a circulation spacing to really the core, the heart of the building. We're creating a secured entry at the addition and also moving the administrative offices towards the front of the building as opposed to being buried past the door where you come in. The district office, as a result, moves out of its location because that's in private real estate for the high school office. A big one for students is creating a new three-story link that connects the upper levels, so you no longer have to go down the stairs and back up the stairs to get from one part of the building. And it's a work in the athletic areas as well. This is a diagram here. If you look in the lower right corner, you can see the extent of remodeling versus additions. And so, this building is, this building project is really predominantly about renovation spaces for the buildings. This diagram really shows that core space where you come in the main entry. This yellow commons area will wrap around the existing courtyard. It actually expands out into the courtyard that's there, but keeps a little bit of the courtyard so we still have daylight. It reorganizes some of the classroom spaces and creates flexible and extended learning environments in multiple areas around the building, so students have a place for doing one-on-one work, small group work with teachers outside of the classroom areas. In the main level here, you'll see this is actually a new corridor along the side of the gym, so that you can actually get from one side of the gym to the other without going downstairs into the locker room to back up. And a novel idea. We also are doing some work with reorganizing the entire office function and approach with our main entry coming in. And I'll show you some three-dimensional diagrams of this if you go over. If you look in the lower right corner, you can see the extent of remodeling versus additions. And so this building is, this building project is really predominantly about renovation spaces for the buildings. This diagram really shows that core space where you come in the main entry. This yellow commons area will wrap around the existing courtyard. It actually expands out into the courtyard that's there, but keeps a little bit of the courtyard so we still have daylight. It reorganizes some of the classroom spaces and creates flexible and extended learning environments in multiple areas around the building, so students have a place for doing one-on-one work, small group work with teachers outside of the classroom areas. In the main level here, you'll see this is actually a new corridor along the side of the gym, so that you can actually get from one side of the gym to the other without going downstairs into the locker room to back up. An ideal idea. We also are doing some work with reorganizing the entire office function or approach with our main entry coming in. And I'll show you some three-dimensional diagrams of this if you go forward. The upper level also expands that commons. I should point out that there's a new large staircase in the center of the commons area to again help with circulation, as well as a new staircase in the front of the building to help with vertical circulation when students are down. More of the flex spaces here, this is in the middle of language arts and social studies, a flex area. We moved staff offices into the link spaces to provide a way of not only helping monitor what's happening in that link, but also to free up some of the classroom space around the building and create those flexible learning environments. Upper level, more of the same, additional flexible areas, opening up some of the corners. What we noticed is there's a lot of pinch points in the building, so these flex spaces actually help with circulation as you move through the building as well. But while these plans are a little bit static, three-dimensional images, a little bit nicer to look at. So this is actually a rendering of what the new entry will look like coming into the building. New stair tower element here gives us an opportunity for bringing a little bit of signage and identity to the building. The old entry comes down, new canopy, glass doors. This is part of the new office expansion, which will be that secure vestibule coming in, and one street sidewalk coming out to the parking lot. So two diagonal ones that you can find in the front. So now it should help guide you to the front door a little bit better, too. This is a three-dimensional image of that, and it's really showing that common space. So coming in the main door, this is actually in the same proximity to the main entry right now. This is the secure vestibule coming into the office area, so this is part of the office expansion. School store directly adjacent to the entry. All of the orange area is student commons. So this is a mixture of student dining, small group work. Think of it as sort of a variety of seating environments, ways for students to do group activity. You can see the base of that new staircase going to the upper level here. We're renovating bathrooms throughout the entire facility, which is a huge issue, as well as creating additional gender-neutral bathrooms within the building, trying to locate those in areas that are flexible throughout the space. We've got a la carte actually moves out to a different area to the building, so we're dispersing some of that food service work. And then we've got classrooms that are in similar location here, and this is just a snippet of part of that main first floor of the building. You can see the secure entry pieces that are being highlighted here within the building as well. On the upper level, this is where that staircase comes up to the commons. This is directly out in front of the upper level, the auditorium balcony. The blue area is the media center renovation. And what this has done is it's actually taken some of those secure spaces from the media center and given us a way to secure those, but moved some of that flexible seating environment out into the student areas to help create that common space along the music and performing arts areas. And see some of those flexible learning spaces along the sides of corridors around those pinch points that are coming to the building. There's another three-dimensional view. So this is standing in the media center now, looking into the new common space. You can see the stairwell coming out from the lower level. We've got seating on both levels. We've got a variety of seating on the main level here, a lot of glass doors that I quarter up, bringing daylight into the building. So this will really be a space that you see in a lot of other new high schools as you go through. It changes it from more of an institutional cafeteria into a student common space that can be used before school, after school, for a variety of functions. This is the link stacked up on all three levels here, and so this is actually, it's a combination of helping with the circulation, but also as we build things, we're going to have to take the link down, bring cranes in, do our construction during that period, and then rebuild the link as we go up. And so on the first floor, we relocated the food shelf and created some flex areas that are part of the link. The second floor, we have departmental offices, still more of that flex space on both sides of that. And the third floor, more departmental offices as well. So that won't just be a dead corridor, it'll actually be an occupied space. On the gym area, the link that brings you from one side of the gym to the other, as well as locker room models, and putting concessions out in a primary location, so when you have a game or event, but expands the concessions in the lobby space to make that a little bit more flexible in that area as well. This also connects through that corridor up into that commons area. So on weekends or evenings when you have tournaments, you can use that common space as flexible overflow for the athletic events. And then the lower level with the locker rooms, this isn't something that is necessarily shown on referenda diagrams because it's more part of your long-term facilities maintenance. It's work that we're planning on doing. But as we've taken a look at how to take this apart and put it back together, we've also been considering, it doesn't show on this diagram currently, but gender-neutral locker rooms within that space as well. So how can we create some of that space in the lower levels? We've got our district technology offices still remain within the building, although we've relocated them into a different area to help free up some of our real estate within the building. Our administrative offices, here's the secure vestibule. So these interior vestibule doors are locked down after the start of school day. All visitors will then come into the office area where they'll be checked in and registered before moving out into the building. Our outreach moves towards the front of the office location, so we've got a great way of engaging with the community. And our administrative offices on one side of it, our student service offices and the nurse office on the other side, directly adjacent to that common. So students have a way of coming in essentially through a back door into those areas and getting the help that they need without having to pass through the main reception area to get back to those administrative offices. Then the district office, this is really more diatriatic at this standpoint, but this is in the old cafeteria space. And so we started meetings in that area as well to figure out how that works, as well as creating a way for the public to engage with the district office without having to go through a high school office to get it. So that's an overview in terms of where we are in terms of the design presentation. Andy, you want anything to put to schedule a budget at this point?
We're right in a comfortable spot. We're done with our schematic design estimates, so we're right around 5% with that. So that's a comfortable spot for SD, schematic design. And schedule-wise, we're then moving into design development, excuse me, and then followed by construction drawings, and we're looking to bid this in late fall or early winter direction. Right now, we're planning on issuing it in the beginning of December and then bidding it right after the first of the year. But we're also going to play that into consideration of other projects out on the market to make sure that we're getting this in spot.
In order to stay on schedule, we actually take on some of the things that we normally do during design development. We did those last spring before staff left the building, so we had two rounds of user group meetings for the space, so we feel that we've got a lot of input there. Those renderings are really initial ideas, but the next time you see this, they're going to be much more formalized and used all over the building and really start to bring this to life.
Question on the commons design. Am I interpreting correctly that the, basically, there are at least three walls of that courtroom space that will be essentially a floor ceiling, seven-story, big nose, tiny?
Two stories of glass at the end of that space.
Great. So we're really looking at natural light kind of diffusing throughout that entire commons area?
Exactly. And one of the reasons is obviously with the commons, there's to help bring the light into the corner spaces, we didn't want to lose that part of the building as it is. I should also mention, put it out there, but part of the project is also renovating the kitchen spaces, and this reverses the serving line, so it puts it out into that area as well, so as we reorganize the kitchen as part of the maintenance.
And one of the things during the core planning groups that came up was the students really wanted, they still want a place outside to eat, so that corridor accomplishes that.
Second question. So you commented that gender-neutral bathrooms are part of your design at this point? Are you currently planning on having at least one gender-neutral bathroom on each floor, each level? Or I don't know if that fits into what kind of our structure or how that plays?
I don't know if we have them on each floor right now, but it is something off the table right now.
I have a comment to add a question. So the comment sort of dovetails nicely with the pink last question. I just, I appreciate the intentionality that is very clear, and Principal Daniels, it sounds like you've been leading a lot of this and making sure that our school is going to reflect our kids, who they are, what their needs are, and even just that, you know, you pointed out a gender-neutral locker room, I think is a fantastic idea, and I'm so excited just to see how thoughtful all of this has been in making sure this is a school for the next 50 years. So just thank you for that. And then my question is more around timeline. You said bids going out late fall, early winter, so if that step goes according to plan, what would be the construction period for this building?
We're looking to start right after, right after we get bids, right after the first of the year. We're currently planning to start like some of the abatement work in January, because that's-
I don't know what that means.
You know, and I would say pretty much every school that I've ever been in the state of Minnesota has some sort of asbestos pipe insulation or something, and that's bid as a separate package, because it's a different group of contractors that do that. So we like to get that going first before we come in with the other demolition, get the-
All schools have some level of asbestos in there, not a danger to students, not a danger to staff. Take it out, and very carefully go forward.
It's highly regulated, so, I mean, there's a yearly report that comes out that identifies where it all is and if it's-
And also, while construction's happening during the school year, they'll have a disruption avoidance plan. Students or staff have to be worried that they're in construction area, it's all very careful.
If you have a house in Richfield, is there a asbestos sale?
Well, we do have a project oversight committee that meets, just as a reminder, every two weeks, including Mr. Ashby, myself, Mr. Holgy, these gentlemen, and a set of other folk, to make sure that we're dotting every i and crossing every t to do things as well as we possibly can.
It's exciting to see some of the visual after a lot of talk about maintenance and infrastructure systems. It's fun, so thank you.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. All right, with that, we're going to have a conversation around superintendent goals for the school year. We'll take, we'll call it first draft, take two. So what gave some feedback? I'm wondering to talk a little bit about some of the formulas, which I am not posting into the public format, but we will have that as part of our conversation today. So just as a reminder, as we think about how I am evaluating and the success of our school district and for how things are going, it breaks down into three categories: student achievement, process goals, and then also individual performance. So we're looking at the things we're putting into place to be successful, student achievement, and then also your evaluation of my performance, which also takes in feedback from my direct reports and then also feedback from the survey done throughout the community. That breaks down formulaically into approximately 35% is student achievement, 35% is those process goals, with 35% on individual performance and my evaluation. So as we think about from an achievement perspective, and we already threw individual formulas on that, we're looking to continue our growth in the graduation rate, 3%, and then also closing the gap between the highest and lowest groups disaggregated. And if you want to really break down into what that formula is, 35% around five goals means each of those goals is approximately 7% of the overall evaluation. And so the overall growth and then the gap, each goal, about half of that seven, or 3.5 apiece. Looking at proficiency of 85% higher than our voluntary pre-K programs. The TS goal is an assessment that's given to early childhood to say that we're doing the work to get everybody ready for school. Proficiency growth in math, but then also closing the gap between our highest and lowest achieving students, and then also growing based on our math proficiency. So we're able to get a projection in the fall based on the Measures of Academic Progress test, and that will be a projection of where we should be in the spring on the MCA. And so taking a look not just at overall proficiency, but also growth, both in reading and math. And then also, as we focus on continuing to improve our climate and reducing significant incidences, we really want to decrease those suspendable incidences, really looking at a 10% or greater reduction across the entire district. But then also, we have a gap between some of our highest and lowest students in terms of behavior incidences, and so we really want to lower that gap and really reduce the amount of suspensions across for all of our students. As we think about some of those process goals, we had teachers in just last week, training in our rollout of K-5 literacy as we roll out Lucy Hawkins and her reading curriculum. And we are also rolling out new 612 math, and our teachers have also been in for training in regard to that. And so we're going to look at some evaluations as we go on throughout the course of the year, of implementation rollout, fidelity of implementation. We're looking at our vision cards that we did, and we'll be rolling out vision card two later on this fall in regard to finance and operations. And we did our first vision card in regard to promotion and marketing this summer, and so we'll look to roll out all four of those, and then produce revised copies by the end of the year. Input and participation groups, continuing with Reimagine Richfield, superintendent strategic advisory, and the extracurricular advisories. And we'll take a look at making sure that those have been implemented, that those are done on a regular basis, to make sure that we're taking into account the feedback of people within our organization and across our community. Then also, leading social-emotional support system improvements, looking at the work of our Safe and Supportive Schools group, and then our overall systems alignment, as we look at some of the survey feedback that we get, and then also the data based on our behavior incidences and looking for reductions in those particular areas. Similarly, as we saw tonight, I'll be helping to oversee the planning and start of our capital facility work. December launch, looks like it just got pushed back to January, but we are going to continue working to keep things rolling. We do have bids coming up, and our team meetings will continue to occur. We've really looked to increase our supports to our staff, making sure that we are expanding our mentoring program for our new teachers, and also for our ongoing staff, as we've changed the way our QCOM teacher peer evaluators, no, peer consultants, peer reviewers, thank you, do their work, removing some of the evaluative component and adding a support component to their roles. We want to continue increasing equity work and increasing our staff diversity. And so as we look at our strong hiring and recruitment process, you actually were very reaffirming in your commitment to our ongoing equity work, as you all participated this summer in innocent classroom training. And then we're on pace for initial training for all of our staff and equity work throughout the course of this year. And then we also have some specific leadership and equity being brought to us through a team that went out to Minnesota Humanities Center, and it'll be bringing some additional equity work across all of our buildings to our staff. And the last piece is really leading communications and marketing improvement, as we look to review and improve our social media work. You may notice the relaunched Richfield Facebook, which has jumped up from just over 400 followers to approximately 650 at this time. We're going to continue on in that way, really updating our social media presence, continuing to create more marketing materials, including adding video and some additional communication support. Other areas that we'll do, as we talk about evaluation and how we look at if we are achieving the goals we're setting out to, just as a reminder, yearly we do a district and superintendent survey, looking for growth across there based on baseline of previous years. Looking at where does our market share land in comparison to previous years, and how many enrollment applications do we have based on the number of students possibly within our population? Looking at our teacher evaluations of staff training, and so as we're working with rollout of literacy and math, how do our teachers assess, how is the training going, and how does our evaluative team assess the implementation of data of our new curriculum? Then obviously, expanding social media, as I just touched on, and then also looking as our HR and all of our teacher and staff evaluators complete their data, looking at the data comparing, how do our staff evaluations compare to previous data in those areas? You also have the additional formulas, breaking each of those areas down further, as we really look to mathematically put some numbers behind the things that we're looking to achieve. Draft two, we'll say of draft or second take draft one, as we try to finalize that for this fall. Feedback before we go up to a final draft at the start of school in one of our next couple of weekends.
I just have a question around the goal for fewer suspendable incidents.
Yes.
And how do we propose implementing that and managing that? I mean, there's, you could easily be accused of simplisticizing normal suspensions, which I doubt is going to be the case. And so how do we measure, what is a suspendable incident currently? Do we have a list of things now, and do we review that and say, anything that counts as one of these? Some of them are single incidents, some of them are the result of a series of escalating incidents, right?
So I think that you make a very clear semantic and important point. Suspendable incidents, if you look within our handbook, there are a set of incidences that recommend suspension. So the goal to recommend a reduction in suspensions, which might mean don't suspend when it's a suspendable incident. We document all of our behavior incidences within our schools, and the goal is to reduce, obviously, we want to have more proactive positive situations, but also to reduce the negative situations. So reduction in suspendable incidences, there are incidences that call for, within our handbook, suspension. Fighting, assault, drug sales, things along those areas, we're looking to reduce those particular incidences. And so as you categorize incidences from a minor incident that might have possible consequences of teacher redirection, parent contact, student conference, and there's a wide wage and a wide menu of behavior interventions that are suggested, there are some for which suspension is one of the suggested interventions. And so we want to reduce that level of incident, which we obviously speak to a reduction in the negative incidences, or negative higher level incidences occurring within our organization.
Can I add a phrase?
Please.
So what I'm hearing from you is we're not changing the rules, we're not making it more lax, but we're seeking to be more proactive and working with our students before they hit that suspendable fraction.
Can I rewind the tape and use that as my words? That'd be a very clean and clear way of describing it. Yes.
This is prevention as opposed to punishment.
Correct.
I think my question on this is fairly similar to what I shared at the last meeting, which is I think it's helpful to see how the goals are going to be sort of broken down in a calculation, but I think how we'll know whether success has happened at the end of this next school year is still a question that I have for several of these things. Because I think that there's a way to just say, yes, we- Because I think that there's a way to just say, yes, we did it, and then there's a way to say, and how successful was it? And I think it's that second piece that I am just eager to get more clarity around. Like, what are the different inputs that will determine whether or not something was successfully achieved? And I'm happy for that to be a conversation you and I have one-on-one for the next draft or whenever you think is appropriate.
And I kind of dig it back on that comment, Crystal. The piece that I'm curious about is, again, this is into the weeds on how we're defining, not really defining the subgroups that we're measuring, but what measure, basically, what I want to be sure that we're doing is that we are appropriately normalizing those measures for the size of the group. So in other words, I just want us to not fall into any traps of, for a measure that should be relative to the size of the subgroup that we're measuring, and don't want us to fall into a trap of not normalizing it relative to what that normally needs to be. So again, very much in the weeds, but I think it's important for making sure that what we end up measuring is both transparent but accurate, and, you know, measuring what we really are seeking to accomplish.
And then we communicated about this before, but to add something about customer service, the customer service aspect of meeting the needs of our students and families. I think we talked about adding it to communications and marketing, but I kind of feel like it wouldn't be good if it was a separate.
A traditional process.
A separate thing.
Sorry to go back, sort of step on your toes, Kristine. The only other question I have, but I'll shift to the student discipline piece, is I'm assuming that this then sort of dovetails very nicely in with the work that we're doing with the, right?
Yes, also with our safe and supportive schools group, which is reviewing all of our handbook, all of our practices. They, I think they've talked about our attendance policy and our truancy policies in there. Should we pass the gender inclusion policy? They'll be looking to add some guidelines. They'll be working on that. And then they will also be working on, working on behavior policy and practices in regard to that. Perfect. All right, so I will follow up with Board Member Rodney. I will add the suggestion of Chair Malick, and if there are other feedback prior to finalizing goals for the school year, I will have that conversation, and I will roll that out either first day of school or the second meeting in September.
Thank you.
Last thing on the superintendent update is just a rough guideline. We presented this a couple of years back, but the board asked for us to review this again. Just sort of a rough guideline of the things that we address on the general timeline that we do it with regard to our board meetings. So you'll see in front of you, this is the RPS management team, along with the School Boards Association, and also the Board of Education, what we do as cabinet team, but also then I review with Chair Malick. We walk through the things that make the most sense in regard to the agenda, and then we also try to capture the things that have been brought up by board members at previous meetings to add those on a timely basis, and sort of work our way through most of these things over the course of the year.
I just want to point out within that, that policy review appears in every month except October, curiously. And I'm willing to bet that in October, we'll have a policy review.
You're going to challenge me to take it off the agenda for October. All right, we will make sure.
Is that what happens when you take a break on policy review?
Yes, that it catches up with us.
Thank you for including this. I think it would be really helpful, as we talked about, to have this potentially just at the end of every board pocket, since we have suggested in future items in there as sort of our constant reference, and also to make it more visible and accessible to members of the public. We're also curious what we're going to be talking about if there is.
So we can absolutely do that. I'm just going to remind, this is a rough guideline.
Yeah, I think as long as we include that.
Yep.
But it is helpful if people are interested in a specific thing, they can kind of find out about when. And then if they want to contact us with questions at that time, we could also. And if that is it on that, we do not have commendations, and we would move on to the consent agenda.
So then Chair, I will move to the consent agenda as presented.
No, we'll sign it.
So a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Ashmead, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the consent agenda passes. And we will now move on to old business, board policy review, and board policy 586, gender inclusion policy.
All right, so this would be the fourth read and recommended board policy. So I anticipate asking for board action on that this evening, as is our policy, or as is our practice. When we come up with a new policy, there are several reads, revisions, prior to me moving them forward for request, for vote. And so just as a reminder, we have gone through that. We've taken significant feedback and input on our policy, or our proposed policy. And just as a reminder, gender inclusion is something practiced by Richfield Public Schools. This policy reaffirms this at the board level, and many of these practices are already in place. What this does is this formalizes from a board level that this is a policy that we will acknowledge that we are following the laws and guidelines of the state of Minnesota, and that we are reaffirming our commitment to gender inclusion within our schools. We are also then tasking me, along with the Safe and Supportive Schools Group, with creating some guidelines to go along with this to further delineate some of the specific actions and plans that would occur as we work to accommodate, again, at the students' request and to support our students in regard to gender inclusion. To answer a couple of the pieces that I heard, just to make sure that you are aware, this is fully in compliance with the expectations of the laws of the state of Minnesota. The state of Minnesota is very clear in regard to gender inclusion, support of all genders and gender identification. And so that's not really ambiguous within our state, as it's also not ambiguous within our schools. This is something that we support and the state of Minnesota supports. Our role within our schools, and our role that you've defined very clearly, is to support our students and define all of the ways possible to support our students. And this is one of the ways that we do that. And so this policy in place supports our students as they continue on in our schools. So I believe it's an important policy, and so I'm going to move that towards the chair, towards next steps.
Does anyone have, is there a discussion? Do people have further questions?
I have received several calls regarding this matter, and because I was concerned about not only representing citizens of Richfield, but also personal interest, I did some research. And the transgender panacea that many people claim is not all it appears to be. I found numerous situations where high rates of suicide and self-harm are found in research on transgender identified people. Outcomes are not necessarily improved after sex reassignment, surgery, or hormonal treatments. Thirty-year study in Sweden of 324 people found that they have a suicide rate nearly 20 times greater than any other group, the general public, let's put it that way. There's been a real significant spike in individuals seeking treatment for transgender concerns. And a lot of it is regarding to youth, and there's been a rather significant trend called rapid onset gender dysphoria, which manifests itself suddenly in adolescents and teen girls who show no signs of gender dysphoria before puberty. In many cases, 50% of the youth are in pre-existing friends become transgender together. The average number of friends within a group is often three and a half or more. So there is some concern on my behalf that, well, we want to be open, we want our kids to express themselves. I think we need to tread very carefully. We should not open doors that we can't do. And it's found out that after puberty, 88% of all girls are more readily identifiable with their, feeling good about being identified with their biological sex. And over 98% of the boys after puberty feel good about themselves in terms of their original biological sex. So like I say, it's not a panacea that everybody is benefit and helps. It does help many, but there are others that have difficulties with transitions even after the surgery and hormone treatment. They are not always happy, and detransitioning is frequent among these people. I just want to make that clear and let people know that there are any, I shouldn't say many, several who have called me with concerns, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
So a couple of things I'm just going to point back out to address some of those thoughts within our policy. So our role, so we are responding to students, right? So students are requesting, students are sharing with us their perspective, and our role is to listen and to support. Our role is not to convince students of things one way or another. Our role is to support our students. Similar research shows that not having supportive adults in students' lives, or specifically when there are gender identity questions, can be a very damaging situation. And so as a school district, our role, and the role that I feel that I've been tasked with, is to provide supports to all of our students in the greatest way possible. And so that's what my hope is as far as this policy, and that's what my hope should we pass this, as far as we got, is to create those systems and structures of support, make sure that all of our students know that we will be supportive, and that we will accommodate and try to figure out how to best support students based on hearing their voice, the same way we did to reimagine Richfield, and hearing from our students directly, what do they need to be those adult partners that they're asking for.
I think as a position, there are a couple of points that I think I want to make relative to interpretation of sort of studies that are cited. The first point is that it's always very difficult to interpret positive fact in any type of an observational study. And I'm assuming, John, that the studies that you're citing are what we call observational, meaning that we weren't randomly assigning folks to gender reassignment or not in an effort to treat their gender dysphoria disorder. So what that means is that even though it may be true that there was a higher rate of suicide found in a particular study, that does not follow that the transgender status of that individual was the cause of that individual's suicide. There may be any number of other factors at play for that individual. Of course, we know that living as a gender nonconforming individual in a gender binary society can be a very difficult road to follow. And so I think that for generations that have preceded us, a number of those people who are gender nonconforming, presumably are dealing with stigmatization and a number of other challenges that would put their mental health at risk, not on the basis of their biology or their identification, which would be their self-identification. So I think that's important to point out so that we don't misinterpret information that doesn't support inclusion. The second piece that I, and I want to echo what Steve said, is that I'm pleased with our policy as being a supportive policy, in other words, supporting the individual's right to self-determination. And that's what I see as kind of the cornerstone of our policy, that we are striving to make this a safe environment for individuals to self-determine. It's impossible, unfortunately, for us to completely wall ourselves off from society. And it is certainly true that there is a huge dialogue going on across our society about gender identification. And some of that dialogue, there's always going to be pendulums that swing, and I think it is certainly true to say that during adolescence, that is a time of questioning and exploration, where many humans are sort of experimenting with where do I fit? And so we know that that is just a normal part of being a human. And I think our goal as we press this policy is to allow our students to have that exploration free of a constraint that is placed upon them by the school district. Society is already placing any number of constraints upon our students that we are powerless to control. But we at least want to take away the constraints that we have. I think that's the way I agree with what we're trying to do.
So what I really see is that our responsibility is to support the student and not to make a judgment call on what they or their family are deciding or figuring out, or wherever they are in their process. Our goal is to support the student so that they can learn and thrive in school. I feel like this policy has that.
To echo some of what Stephen said, we're dealing with this already. This policy is an effort at, you know, we, one of the things is to have consistent application of those procedures across the district. You know, John, the studies you mentioned suggest that people making, you know, decisions and treatments, and that are well beyond what we do in school. We're just trying to welcome them and say, hey, you be you, here's math, you know, and we'll get through math class, and whatever we can do to help you learn the math and the other subjects that are here, it'll be a friendly environment, or as friendly as we can make it. And that's what I see, you know, it is, I don't see within the policy anything where we're recommending or condemning. It's just, we're just trying to make it clear and have consistent implementation of the procedures that are already in existence, that this is how we're going to treat it. So, you know, it's, one of the things that was brought up earlier was, you know, some of the definitions. But what I'd said a moment ago about, you know, October being missing, we review policy all the time. Our policies are not perfect, and they're not permanent, right? So there's aspects of this policy we could read it a month from now and find some other words to insert or perhaps a sense to strike. I mean, we could look at the actual wording of it. I don't have a problem with the policy as presented in the whole. I can probably wordsmith things, but no one likes my writing, anyway.
I would just say to that, and I, you know, people can see in the traction, there are a couple of versions to this policy in front of us tonight in comparison to the third version that we looked at at our last meeting, and want to appreciate a young person who shared recommended language that they thought would better serve this policy and what we are trying to do. And that, to me, is a great example of listening and saying, you know, we are going to continually evaluate and revise, and even what we are going to be voting on tonight reflects changes from the last meeting because of new information that we learned, that someone was generous enough to share with us. So just wanted to appreciate that publicly. And then I think one of the things that is great about the policy, and I hope and really encourage people to read the policy, is what it actually says and what it doesn't say. So much of the headlines that get written are about bathrooms. And yes, bathrooms are important, but it is about so much more than that. And I think this policy is set up so that our families know what to expect, so that our staff know what to expect, and how to best support our young people and their families. And that is why I support this so strongly, because I think it is about that self-determination that you talked about, Pete, and allowing our students to bring their full selves to school every day. And, you know, Steve mentioned the Safe and Supportive School Group. I'm the board representative on that, and I think we are eager to take this policy, if it is passed, and really get into that implementation question of what does this look like then for each one of our schools. This is the guidance that we would be setting as a board, and it really is, you know, up to our staff, up to the folks that are members of the community on that committee, to help really think about how do we make this real, and how do we ensure that the practices that we're doing in our schools live up to this policy and, you know, what we're already doing in so many cases. and, you know, what we're already doing in so many cases?
In my experience, in the last two and a half years, we as a board, I feel that we have been striving for transparency, striving for inclusion of comments from the community. I'm very proud of the work we did last year with Reimagining Richfield and how we have students' voices brought up to the top of everything that we do. And I remember that we had talked about how important it is that those students see that their words had a meaning, that were meaningful and that we listened to them. And I think this policy is one of those examples. I think it's not a coincidence that the cross-reference policies in means are about bullying prohibition, equal opportunity for education, bullying and missing prohibition, and also I think for the sake of providing, we are in the business of teaching students and offering welcoming academically and enrichment opportunities for all of them. And this policy does that. And I agree with your comments about, you know, it's not a job to judge what's happening. Do we have 4,000 students, more than that? It's really not what this is about. This is about, this doesn't really, I don't think harms anybody already and it brings a lot of benefit and a lot of awareness to everyone. As you said, Crystal, the families reading this, the other students, the staff. And this is why I'm proud to support the policy.
Yeah, and I think, in fairness, John, I know that, I know that the reason that you're, you know, in good faith, you're bringing the points forward that you're bringing forward because it's about having a safe and supportive environment. So I think that's the good feedback aspect.
I'll move the policy as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Paulus, a second by Ms. Brockie. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the policy passes. So we will move on to new business and the bid award for fresh produce products.
John, leave us talk about some fruit and vegetables. Thank you. So we have a bid award that we're recommending here to Bergen Fruit and Nut as part of a review that we conducted. It's a four-year contract that's being set up. One year for initial and then it has up to three additional years renewal after that. We have bids from Bergen Vix and Upper Lakes Foods. We've worked with all of them in different capacities, conducted reference checks on all of those, did some analysis on if we had purchased some of our produce, as what we did last year, to this coming year with the new pricing, how would it play out? And with that, Bergen comes in with about a $12,000 to $16,000 savings as part of that, for the annual spend on that. So we looked at a number of different ways, looking at that, looking at guaranteed fixed pricing compared to the pricing that's more variable and how that was comparing in there, as well as looking at the top 10 products and how that filled out into that category with that as well. And so with that analysis, we're bringing forward this recommendation for that award to Bergen Fruit and Nut for the 18, 19 year with an up to four-year contract at that point.
Craig, can I ask, the top 10 seems to be about, whatever percent of the total, our top 10 items are obviously the things we buy routinely. How many, is there any of those that were on the fixed price so that we know what they are for?
So if you look below, the bottom pulls out the price comparison. And so you can see what the volume is on the fixed price and where that plays out. So you can see 29 items were on fixed price with Bergen.
Thank you.
18 were with Vix and 26 were with Upper Lake Foods. So the pricing there, especially in that first column, is looking at if we were buying that product all this first year, similar to what our spend was last year. So the $46,000 Bergen comes out more, but it's because they have more product and more of our higher volume product on their fixed pricing. A little bit of that is a gamble, because if pricing goes down, then we have some savings there. But knowing that that's fixing that area, we prefer to stay with the, or that reaffirmed kind of that support just given on the natural pricing component as well.
The only other difference I noticed was deep into it, the P-card acceptance. Is that an issue at all or not?
No, we looked at it just because with the P-card, we get some rebates. And so there's a value added with that. But if you're spending money on a P-card because they're upcharging the P-card, then it doesn't make sense to do that, so. Looking for every dime we can get for the district.
Appreciate that. I will move the contract.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Ms. Brockie, a second by Mr. Paulus. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the bid award passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holgi. We will move on to board member work authorization.
Right, so, sorry, I was spacing out a little bit. For a board member to receive employment within Richfield Public Schools, all board members need to be present. That would be all six of you and a majority would need to vote yes on an individual roll call vote. We are honored by Mr. Ashmeet, who drives bus for us and helps our students get from point A to point B to help continue their educations. I appreciate that opportunity for Mr. Ashmeet, but it would absolutely have to be something the board would have done. So there's a resolution before you tonight to determine your perspective.
I would be remiss if I didn't say that, if I didn't see John at Smith Meats, I don't know what I'd do. I need to be there, so. I will move that we approve the, John Ashmeet to perform care for part-time services. I will.
I will second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Paulus. This is a resolution, so I will pull the board. Ms. Cole?
Aye.
Mr. Tensing?
Aye.
Mr. Ashmeet?
Aye.
Ms. Brockie?
Aye.
Mr. Paulus?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye and we have approved board member work authorization from Mr. Ashmeet.
Thank you. Thanks for your service, John.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I, you know, I like to see you with the ski races too, so. We move on to donations.
All right, so just as a reminder, Bill Davis from the Spartan Foundation, and while he gave us an amazing check for $24,000, actually that goes straight to our students. And so that is supporting the scholarships that the Spartan Foundation gave to our students. So while we are acknowledging receipt of that money, that money is actually passed through and on to scholarships for our students. So we want to thank the Spartan Foundation for that, as we've done at the breakfast and at other times. We want to thank Anna Mellichuk, Richfield Public Schools' parent and Alina Health employee, chose to RDLS as recipient of a Dollars for Doers reward of $100. Dollars for Doors is a component of the Alina Health Employee Volunteering Program, Mission Matters. We want to thank Christopher A. Carlson, who sent a donation of $500 to the Ellen Carlson Scholarship Fund. This scholarship is in memory of Ellen Ann Carlson. Ellen worked as a special ed paraprofessional at Richfield High School from 2009 to 2015. And the scholarship is awarded to a graduating senior student from Richfield High School who's been served by a special education, individualized education plan. So we thank Christopher and we thank Anna for their generous donations.
And we accept these donations with gratitude.
We have a motion by Ms. Brockie, a second by Ms. Cole. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and we will accept these donations with gratitude. We move on to advanced planning and legislative updates.
So we don't have much in terms of a legislative update, just a reminder for the board. Amnesty is beginning to put together ideas and a proposal and conversation around a platform. I will have that to share with the board at the next week's meeting. They're just wrapping up a survey of districts to see what are their legislative ideas and platforms. And we will use that as with each fall of a legislative session, we develop our own legislative platform prior to our meeting with our legislators.
Information and questions from the board?
Just one thing I was going to share, which is appreciation for the Richfield Historical Society, our neighbors, kind of across the street. They did a great presentation last week on the history of Richfield High School. And it was about an hour long and it was really well attended by many, many RHS grads. And I, as somebody relatively new to Richfield, learned a lot about how the high school was started, how things, you know, ranging from the Spartan to the song to the name of the newspaper were chosen, you know, when you start attending high school. And I think one thing that I honestly didn't know was that the first graduating class was of that of 1956. So it was just, it was a great presentation and they do these history forums focused on some aspect of Richfield once a month at the Richfield Community Center on 70th and Niglet. And I just really enjoyed it, of course enjoyed the particular focus on our high school. But wanted to thank them for putting that on and just encourage people who are history buffs to check it out.
They presented at one of the Richfield Optimists meetings this year. They did a great job. This was on Wood Lake and people trying to get a golf course over.
So the first class was 1956, that would mean Mr. Davis, who graduated in 1960, was the first freshman class.
Forgive me if this, if this was something that was discussed at the beginning that I missed earlier this month. Are we, relative to what Mr. Boy had presented with the Spartan branding logo, have we had followed yet?
We have not at the board level. The Extracurricular Advisory met on the 8th of August, got feedback. We are going back to do some redesign of the logo redesign to gather some additional feedback at this point. And so we're kind of, so we agreed on, I believe it was Spartan red. We agreed on a particular R and we also ran that by the advisory group just to walk that through again and then had some pretty substantial conversation over the logo and are going to play with that again before gathering some additional feedback and then bring it back here for conversation. So it could be a why.
So is Mr. Boy willing to add?
Yes, I think you should email me also in that regard.
I've had similar conversations with Mr. Boy and he needed color and letter choice sooner and the logo was something later, because once we get into construction, the logo is to be placed somewhere. So that there's a delay on that, but we have to get color scheme and font.
Yeah, and we nail those.
I have a private email from Bill Davis that I, from along these lines. I've lived in Richfield long enough to have been able to vote as a seventh grader on the school colors and nickname for the new high school. We could have been the Rockets, but Spartans was the name selected.
Yeah, I think the conversation, as you share, one of the conversations of the Extracurricular Advisory was around an acknowledgement that it is pretty old-fashioned, that it has been there for a long time. But this is also a community where people stay. And a community where that might have a different meaning than a more transient, for lack of a better word, population community, where people move in and out more often. And so there is a lot of feelings around that. And so trying to figure out something that would bring things up to date, while still retaining that acknowledgement of history is something we're trying to figure out. We're trying to figure it out prior to bringing that back.
You know, I think that those values are right in line with what I would answer.
Now, is there a new teacher breakfast tomorrow?
There's a new teacher breakfast tomorrow at 8:00 a.m., I believe it is, in the Richfield High School cafeteria. So you are all welcome to be there. I believe I will be speaking, as will our board chair, Helen. And you are welcome to stay for a little bit. Or you like a free breakfast?
Okay, so we will move on to future meeting dates. So our next meeting is Tuesday, September 4th, the first day of school. 7:00 p.m. is a regular board meeting, followed by September 17th, which is a Monday meeting, which will include public comment. Are there any suggested future agenda items?
You'll look at the calendar, Chief.
I'm pretty sure we'll get told how class size is rolled out and things like that, right?
Yeah.
How the bus is rolled out, too.
We'll have a first day update and we'll do our best in regard to class size. Just as a reminder, numbers of kids rotating in and out are quite frequently over the next month. And so we monitor very closely to see if there are any trouble spots and we keep a really close eye on those particular areas.
So if no one has anything, is anyone prepared to make a motion?
I will move to adjourn.
I will second.
So a motion by Mr. Paulus, a second by Mr. Ashmeet. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and we are adjourned. Thank you.